I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Dover Sherburne Regional School Committee, the Dover School Committee, and the Sherburne School Committees for Wednesday, December 16th, 2020. This open meeting is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's Executive Order of March 12th, 2020. Information on how to join remote school committee meetings and meeting agendas are posted on the Dover Sherburne District website. Please note this meeting is being recorded. Please be aware that anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording. And on the agenda is the slate of finalists for the superintendent search. And I'll turn it over to Ann at this point.
Brooke, and thank you, everybody, for making it tonight. I appreciate it. So as Brooke mentioned, our goal is to accept the slate of finalists that was unanimously voted on by the screening committee and to share a little bit of information about the next part of the superintendent selection process. So I know there are a lot of questions that people may have, things about like how big the candidate pool was, what the candidates were like, what the screening committee thinks about the applicant pool, et cetera. But unfortunately, because most of the work of the screening committee is done in executive session, the answer to those questions is actually confidential. So what I can tell you is that it was a good-sized candidate pool, and in fact, it was larger than the pool was for some recent searches. And that the vote to move this slate of candidates on to the school committee was unanimous. So at this point, the slate for each candidate is wiped clean, and there are no favorites or frontrunners. Also, just to make sure everybody understands, by voting for the slate, you're not guaranteeing one of these candidates will be the next DS superintendent. The vote is just to agree that these candidates are now finalists, and as such, we're moving them on to the public part of the process. So like, as I just said, that the screening committee part is all confidential. As we move forward, then, from now forward, all parts of it are public process. So let me just, I really, really, to read into public record, this is the email announcing the slate of finalists that will be sent to the community tomorrow. And I've asked members of the superintendent search team to help read it into public record. So we'll start with Angie, please.
Over the past three weeks, the screening committee met to review applications and interview candidates for the position of superintendent of schools. The screening committee reviewed all the applications and subsequently selected a number of candidates who were invited to meet with the screening committee for a preliminary interview. Following the preliminary interviews, and after much discussion and consideration, the screening committee voted to recommend four candidates for further consideration by the school committees of Dover and Sherburne.
The four candidates listed in alphabetical order are Vanessa Bouchain, Ed D., currently Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, Rentham, Massachusetts Public Schools. Prior to this role, Dr. Bouchain served as principal in Rentham, grades four to six, Brookline, pre-K to eight, and Easton, pre-K to three.
Wait, wait, can I just stop you? It's actually, it's Bochain. I just want to make sure we get the pronunciation right. It's Vanessa Bochain. Thanks.
Mark Goslin, currently Special Education Supervisor, North Penn School District, Lansdale, Pennsylvania, a doctoral candidate at the University of Pennsylvania, expected May 2020. Mr. Goslin previously served as the North Penn District Curriculum Coordinator and has been an elementary school principal.
Next, we have Aurelia Enrique, Ed D., currently consultant for fostering quality schools and the Journal for Leadership and Instruction, Scope. Dr. Enrique previously served as the superintendent of the Riverhead Central School District in New York, as well as the Assistant Superintendent for Elementary Education and Human Resources for the Brentwood School District in New York. And then finally, Robert Worgo, currently Assistant Superintendent of Instructional Services and Support at Waymouth Public Schools, a doctoral candidate at UMass Lowell. His previous leadership experiences include serving as principal of Situit in King Philip Regional High School. Resumes for each candidate can be found here on the district website.
On behalf of the school committees and our communities, we would like to thank the members of the screening committee for the many hours they devoted to reviewing applications, interviewing candidates, and deliberating during the preliminary selection process. The conversations were insightful, thoughtful, thought-provoking, and courteous. It was a pleasure to work with this truly dedicated people. And I want to read just the list of members of the screening committee. They were Jim Carnes, who's a Chickering Assistant Principal, Regina Cooper Benjamin, who's a DS and Metco alumna, Mark Healy, myself, Anna Hurley, who's the Middle School Assistant Principal, Michael Jaffe, Angie Johnson, Keith Kaplan, who's a teacher, Francie Latour, who's a parent, Monique Marshall-Veale, who's our Metco Coordinator, Kate McCarthy, the Director of Student Services, Lauren McGovern, DSEA President and Teacher, Dennis Quant, who's a parent, Erin Rudat-Salva, Salva, is a parent, and Jen Ryan, who's a teacher. So thank you, thank you to all of those who served on the screening committee. And I want to extend a congratulation to our four finalists to say it's a smart, passionate, energizing group of educators, and we're excited to get to know them. And I'm sure that they're eager to spend time talking with members of our community to get to know us better, too. All right, so now, onto a little bit more mundane business. Actually, you know what? Let's do the vote, and then we'll get to the mundane business. Brooke, can I pass it back to you?
Sure, thank you, Ann.
Yep.
And thank you to all the screening committee and the search committee participants who got us to this point. Okay, this is a little lengthy, so let's start, and Ann, correct me if I say something incorrectly, but.
Can I just interject? Can any questions be asked before we vote, or?
You can ask about process, sure. You can't ask about, you can ask about candidates, but we won't be able to answer anything.
Ann, would you want to do that during discussion?
Yeah, let's do that. Well, that's a good idea. So what we'll do is we'll make the motion, and then we'll have discussion before the vote.
Okay.
Yes, so we'll start with Dover in this case. So Dover, take yourselves off mute. Okay, Dover, do I hear a motion to accept this slate of Vanessa Bochain, Mark Goslin, Aurelia Enrique, Enrique, and Robert Worgo to move into the public portion of the search for the next superintendent of the Dover Sherburne and Dover Sherburne Regional School Districts?
Mark Healy, so moved?
Second.
Colleen Burt, second.
And discussion, any discussion? Leslie?
Yeah, so again, I've never been a part of this process, so Ann, please tell me if I'm asking questions I'm not supposed to be, but I guess I just really had a couple. I was wondering, did we really shake the trees for the applicants? I guess I was expecting more superintendent experience?
So we can't really answer that part. I mean, I can tell you that it was a thorough search. We did have a number. We had a relatively large candidate pool.
You did, okay.
That's about all I can tell you.
Can you say whether you were happy with the pool or no?
I cannot tell you that.
You can't?
No.
And I guess it's also fair to say that the screening committee did not have a mandate to advance any finalists or any particular number of finalists. So they could have come to the joint school committees and said that we don't have anybody to advance back to you, correct?
Yes, we could have. Also, I have to say that we did discuss, as part of the joint school committee, whether, as we were discussing the candidate profile, whether superintendent experience, because this did happen in public meeting, I can share this, whether candidate, previous superintendent experience was a requirement, and the committee said no. That was part of the discussion.
I remember that. I just, I guess I expected more superintendent experience. And then my, I have another question. If we were to vote yes for the whole slate, and it gets to the point where no one has voted in, can we go back to NESDEC to get more applicants? Or have they, they've shaken the trees, and this is it?
So at any point, we can decide, so we can accept the slate. What we do tonight is accept the slate. It's a yes or no, up or down, as I indicated, I believe in the email that was, that I sent, right?
Yep.
If we can choose to move people, to move people forward in the search after, like, we can say that there's some, our superintendent is in this group, but as I also indicated in the email, we, it does not, voting for the slate does not guarantee that our next superintendent is part of this current slate. We are not voting for a superintendent today. We are just voting to learn more about these four candidates.
Okay. My last question is, if there was anyone internally that was going to be considered, is that a whole separate process? I cannot recall what happens with that.
If there were internal candidates would apply just as, the same way that external candidates would apply.
Okay.
Can I just ask one, one quick question? The number of four being on the slate, was that, that was just what you guys thought was, were the four best? Was that number, it could have been five, or six, or three, depending on who was presented to you? Is that right?
Our options were zero, or two, or more. We couldn't present just one, because that in essence would have the screening committee selecting, potentially selecting, the next superintendent by only providing one option. So.
So these are four strong options that you felt, you felt strongly enough to bring to us?
The screening committee decided that these were four worthwhile candidates for us to get to know more about.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for all the work you guys have done.
Yes, thank you very much.
I also would like to just quickly say that there is some more training about the process. I will say a little bit more about it tonight, but there is a training that I will tell you about, that it will be really important for those of you who are unfamiliar with the process, to attend. And also, if you have questions, please reach out to me. I'm happy to talk with any of you also offline. If you have a litany of questions, you're like, I just don't feel comfortable asking in public, it's fine if you ask now, but if you don't, you're welcome to reach out. I'm happy to talk with anybody to explain more at any point in time.
So Ann, can I just sort of state my understanding of what our vote means tonight? And you can tell me if I'm correct. So basically, we are voting to move forward with the process, move forward with the public portion of the process with these candidates. We're not committing to any particular outcome in that process. Is that correct?
Yes, I do, yes, that is correct.
Okay, does that give some clarity to what we're after tonight? DSC folks, okay. So we had a move and a second, so I'm going to do a roll call to accept this slate of candidates. Let's see, in no particular order, Sarah.
Sarah Gutierrez, done, yes.
Leslie?
Leslie Leon, yes.
Colleen?
Colleen Burt, yes.
And Mark?
Mark Healy, yes.
And Brooke Maderes, yes. And I'm going to turn it over to Angie Sherburne.
And do I need to restate the entire motion, or can I just state that we're going to?
You can just state as motion as stated.
Motion as stated, thank you. So Sherburne, if you wanted to take yourselves off mute, do I have a motion to accept the slate, a motion as stated?
So moved.
Thank you. Nancy, move. Do I have a second?
Second. Amanda Brown.
Thank you, Amanda. Amanda, second. And now, do I have any discussion? Hey, hearing none, I will do a roll call vote. Megan?
Megan Page, yes.
Amanda?
Amanda Brown, yes.
Nancy?
Nancy Cordell, yes.
And Angie Johnson, yes. Our member Mike Fitzgerald is not present.
Thanks, Angie. And Maggie, can I turn it over to you in the region?
Good evening. First, a huge thank you to all of you on the superintendent search team committee. It's holiday season. You all gave a ton of your time and thinking and just hard work, and I deeply, deeply appreciate all that you did for us. Could all of the members of the regional school committee please take yourselves off mute? Do I have a motion as stated by Brooke Maderes to accept this slate of four candidates to move forward in the process?
Michael Jaffe, so moved?
Thank you, Michael. Do I have a second?
Kate Potter, second.
Thank you. Motion made by Michael Jaffe, seconded by Kate Potter. Michael Jaffe?
Michael Jaffe, yes.
Oh, wait, any discussion? Okay, fantastic. Thank you, Michael Jaffe, yes. Judy Miller?
Judy Miller, yes.
Kate Potter?
Kate Potter, yes.
Ann Hovey?
Ann Hovey, yes.
I feel like I'm somebody besides me. Did I get everyone? Okay, Maggie Sharon, yes. And unfortunately, Lynn Collins is unable to be with us tonight, and so, you know, she's not able to vote. Thank you.
Ann, could I say one thing real quick? So I just wanted to tell everyone that this is a long and involved process, and Ann kept us all very organized. So I wanted to thank Ann for all of her leadership, because this was a big undertaking, and she understood the ins and the outs, and could tell us exactly how it was going to go. And so she did make the process very easy, even though it is holiday season, it's very involved. It was, it was very nice to have someone who was comfortable in this position. And Mark and Michael were wonderful to work with, so it was, it was a nice, it was a nice working relationship, so thank you all.
I'll second that.
Yes, thank you, thank all of you. Really appreciate it.
And I think we also have a couple of members of the search team that are with us in the audience tonight. I think Monique Marshall-Veale and Anna Hurley, and I don't know if I'm missing anybody, but just really to you and all of your colleagues who took your time to do this, thank you.
I have to say, yes, here, here, here. And I have to say that even when our conversations were complicated, even when we disagreed, it was actually, it was an amazing group to work with, and it makes me really excited and about all the work that lies ahead, because there is a lot more work, but to know that there's so many people who are thoughtful, dedicated, caring, smart, who are in our corner and really working hard for us, I, it's exciting what we can do in moving forward. I'm looking forward to that. So thank you, thank you. Should I move on, Brooke, to the mundane business now?
All right, Kate, take it away. I don't know if Mark had something to say.
Oh, sorry, Mark?
No, no, I actually didn't. I was just playing with my microphone.
Sorry to put you on the spot. Okay, you know, keep going, Ann.
Just really quickly, so the training meeting that I mentioned, there'll be on January 6th, starting at 6:30. It's going to be a two-part meeting. I'll be sending you the info tomorrow. Cheryl, I see you there. The first part will be run by NESDEC, and they will, they have sort of a, how to interview, what the, how to interview candidates, the process is what to expect, about an hour long. And then after that, we'll have a workshop to discuss this, our specifics about, like, about our process and review our candidate profile, and just make sure that we've got all of our Ts crossed and Is dotted before we then can jump into the process. This is all going to be required before interviewing, so the goal then is to start interviewing mid-January. We will see what that looks like. Normally, at this point in a regular search year, we would already have the dates probably set for the interviews, but given that we're not even sure what it's going to look like yet, it's going to be a TBD. So thank you for your patience with that. There will be a number of meetings for us. There could be as many as six evening meetings for the school committee. The four candidate interview nights traditionally have been done in person. I'm not, they'll probably be done via Zoom this year, but oftentimes last up to about two and a half hours, because we ask questions, then there's a public portion. So just know that that's going to be on your calendar coming up, and I'll give you the dates as soon as possible. But it probably won't be until January, because we won't be able to establish things until then. Another part of the process is the people, we'll need people to talk to references. If you are interested in learning more about candidates by talking to references, please reach out to your chair. There'll be a brief training session for that in early January, and then we'll have a chance to call. It'll probably be maybe two or three calls per person, depends on how many people are interested in participating in that. Has anybody here done those before the reference calls before, can talk to that? Brooke, yeah, do you want to say a little bit about?
Yeah, and Kate did as well. Yeah, I would highly recommend, it's only a couple of calls per person, and it's a really important, very important and good way of getting to know the candidates, and you're talking to people who worked with them, for them, they've worked for, et cetera. So I did it, I was fairly new to the school committee. It doesn't take any, you know, level of knowledge, except knowing what the superintendent does and what we're looking for, and how to garner the information that we need, and how to listen and ask inquisitive questions. So yeah, it's not a hard lift, it's not a heavy lift, and it's critical to the process. So I would hope that everyone could, you know, take one or two or three people and then feed that information back to the committee as a whole. I don't know, is that helpful, Ann?
That's, that was great. Thank you. Thank you. So I will be sharing out more information. You'll probably get even some more next week. And then, as you know, we're, everyone's taking a hiatus from the 24th through the 4th, so I think it's a much-needed break, and then we're going to start back up again in January, full steam ahead. Once again, if anybody has any questions about the process, please, please reach out. I'd really rather take the time and explain it to you so you feel comfortable with it than have you not feel comfortable with the process. So please, please do that. Nancy?
I just have a quick question on the process. Which part of the process, or who is responsible for kind of checking the social media footprint of the superintendent-to-be?
Well, so NESDEC does some of that, and then we, we're in charge of doing lots of that as well. We can undertake as much of that as we want. Is that something you're volunteering to do some of? That'd be great.
I could, I could, absolutely. So I just, I, yeah, so it's.
So we, yeah, we check everything, you're right, we check everything. You Google, you, you know, check out on Facebook, whatever that is that you can, we, any information that we can find that's in the public record, especially, we can search as much as we want. So it's great if you want to do that, and if anybody else is interested in doing some of that work as well, or anyone can just do it on your own, with, you know, your extra free time.
Can I ask a quick question to Ann? If, you know, hopefully this won't be the case, but I just wanted to understand if, for some reason, we decided not to move forward with one of these candidates, and we needed to look for an interim superintendent, how would we pivot to that?
Well, so two things. One is, yes, we can pivot. I've done that before. I would rather not spend our time focusing on that right now, because we know what we, what needs to be done for that. I'd really like to focus on the people that we have at hand, but no, it's good to know that that is definitely a possibility, and we know that that's something that we are able to do. And because we've run this search, it makes it easier for us also to then say, we've done the search, we need an interim, as opposed to just going in without having done a search. Because I've done it both ways, having run a search, and then the second time we did, we had to provide a lot of documentation, and it was a lot more work, so.
Got it.
Just puts us in a good place if we need to.
Yeah, let's remember that this happened, that happened before, so we're, we've been around the block a few times.
Well, hopefully, it won't be the case here.
Right, right. But it's good to be prepared for anything. We know 2020 has taught us one thing, it's taught us, you have to be prepared for everything, have a plan A, B, C, and D. So, no, it's good to think about that. Anybody else? For right now, if you come up with other things, you know how to get in touch with me? Just really quickly, check with my committee, did I forget anything or anything you want to add? Angie, Mark, or Michael?
And I don't know if there's anything you wanted to talk about for kind of protocols between now and the kind of training orientation meeting?
Oh, okay, that's a good idea. So, this list is public. As of now, it's, it's public, and tomorrow, Cheryl, I'll be sending you the email to send out to the community, so thank you in advance. So you are welcome to talk about, at this point, any, anything that you know about these candidates, because it's just what is, well, so, no, you're allowed to talk about the resume, what is then going to be public, so you're not allowed to talk about, give out addresses, you know, I told you that that is confidential. You'll see tomorrow the scrubbed resume. As of now, the references that you were able to have access to are still part of their personnel file, and as such, at this time, still considered confidential. You're welcome to do any searching that you want on, online, publicly. And if people want to talk with you about it, at this point, yeah, anything that you want to, anything you want to say to people about the candidates is fine. Just remember, please, that if one of, if our next superintendent is in this group of people, they will be someone that you'll be working with. We also want to be fair and give them the opportunity to present themselves. Remember that what you see in a resume is not necessarily what you get in person. I have to tell you, and I can say, this has been my experience through all of my searches, that some people look amazing on a resume and don't then perform as well in an interview, or don't seem to have the background that you thought that they had. And there are people who really surprise you, you looked at the resume and you're like, and then you met with them, and you're like, oh my goodness, this person is amazing. So just, you know, please try to reserve some judgment and give everyone a fair shot, because that's our job at this point. And does Michael, does that cover pretty much what you were thinking?
Yes, thank you. I guess the only other thing I would, I would add, although this will probably be covered by NESDEC, is the candidates are going to be interviewing us and our communities as much as we're interviewing them. So we all need to keep that in mind, that it's incumbent upon us as a group to do what we can to, to attract and welcome our next superintendent.
I would echo that as well, because I think that one fear I have is, we do, we have access to a little bit more of the private part of some of people's resumes, so I just, I'd be just like, for all of us, careful in terms of, you know, what we put on social media, or having judgments about folks before we've met them, because again, like, they, you know, if I'm looking for a job in a school district, I am looking at every one of our school committee meetings, I'm looking at our social media, I'm looking at like, what are we saying and talking about, and how do we talk about people, and what kind of judgments do we make about people before we know them? And I just want to, for all of us, just to have an opportunity to get to know each of these folks, and to know what they can bring us, and find out whether or not they are someone who's going to help us all grow to the next stage. So that's the only other thing, and that's more just years of, because, because I think this is a particularly unique job in, a lot of the search is public, and that's a big deal for professionals who are trusting in us, that we're not going to do things that are going to adversely impact their whole career in, in, you know, where it's public and people are talking about it, and it's on, you know, the Dover Moms, or it's wherever. I just want to make sure that we, we take care of these folks as well.
Thank you, Maggie. And I'd just like to share, for those who've not been around quite as long, in our most recent search, the one where we hired Andrew, and I can say this because this was public, the other two public, the other two candidates brought forward to the public part of the process, had not served as superintendents previously. They are now both superintendents, doing very well in neighboring districts. So this is not something that's new to us, and in fact, we came to that conclusion as we discussed at our recent school committee meeting, that in the first round in 2015, when we demanded that in fact superintendent experience was required, we had a much smaller pool to choose from. And so we expanded it and got new people. So, you know, it's things like that we know from experience, may or may not be an indicator of future success. So things like that, just be cautious and thoughtful about. So I appreciate that. Thanks. I'm good. So is everybody good? Send it back to you, Brooke. Thanks. I'm good. So is everybody good? Send it back to you, Brooke?
Everybody good?
This is a record for us.
Don't, don't say it. We're not done yet. Anything could happen. Hey, listen, after the five hours in July, or was it August?
It was July. No, it was August, yeah.
Okay, so we will, let's see, DSC will see you tomorrow night. Thank you for your pivot and your flexibility. Everyone, I hope there's no power outages, and it's a beautiful winter wonderland type of situation, and, and nothing, nothing worse than that. But thank you, and thank you to Anne and the whole committee, Mark, Michael, Angie. And I know we're not, certainly not done with the process, but you've brought us this far, so kudos to you. Okay, do I need, do we need to go through the whole adjourning? We do. That's all right. All right, Dover.
Maggie saying no, can we?
Can we just adjourn by unanimous consent? We have to.
Let's do that, yeah.
Yes. I watched that on some other Zoom.
All in favor of a journey? Anyone opposed? Excellent. Okay. Thank you all, appreciate it.
Happy holidays to everyone.